And call this meeting of the Lafayette City Council to order at six thirty. So, tonight, as we open the meeting, I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the last day or so and the events that have happened. Um, I want to be very clear in what I'm about to say is coming from me as the mayor in my seat, not the council, or the council on behalf of the city. Um, I just want to say that it does not matter from what viewpoint we sit at listening tonight. For, but no matter what viewpoint you're at, it's, I believe that we will never see eye to eye with everyone or with everything. But without a doubt, assassination on Charlie Kirk was a despicable action. I condone any action that uses violence to silence someone or is meant to silence a person's right to freedom of speech. And it's disgusting and against the very spirit and foundation of our country. To the family of Mr. Kirk, your sacrifice to support your husband, father and son to do what he had such patriotism and conviction to do does not go unacknowledged. Thank you for sharing him selfishly or selflessly with his country that he had such passion for. And personally, Charlie, thank you for setting the example to me to serve with conviction and reminding me that healthy debate is the way to go. And tonight, I also want us to remember and pay honor to one of the darkest days in our country's history. So I've invited our fire chief to lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance. But first, before he does so, I would like to ask for a thirty second moment of silence to pay respect to all the first responders and Americans who died on September eleventh, twenty four years ago. Hey Chief, would you lead us in this little?
Yes. Before we begin the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to pause on the significance of this day, September eleventh. So on this day, twenty four years ago, three hundred and forty-three firefighters along with police officers, paramedics, and thousands of civilians made the ultimate sacrifice. Their courage reminds us why we choose this calling, to protect others no matter the cost. The truest way we honor them is through our actions every time the bell rings and that we answer the call. Tonight, we remember their sacrifice, their example, and the unity that carried our nation forward. So please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief, for joining us tonight. No, you did not apologize for it.
Thank you for your service, Chief, and also our deputy who's here today.
Yes, hello, deputy who snuck in. Uh, Kennedy, could you please call roll?
Councilwoman, present.
And then Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Kariswell.
Present.
Councilwoman Duggan.
Here.
Councilwoman Ken.
There.
Councilwoman Maggie.
Here.
May I move on to some? Yeah. Okay, we have quorum, so we can continue. Um, it's now time for citizen input. Uh, I do have one that was sent in. Um, do we have any? I don't think we have any based off of who I see in the audience, but just double check. No?
Oh, you're okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm just getting a touch.
I was not gonna lose. Okay, okay. So this came to us today and was asked to be read by Leonard McCall, who is a resident of Lafayette. One of the things you need to take into consideration when you might consider raising rates, two things. As a public service, you need to treat every dollar you take in. You should cut cost of operation to the bone. This is not your money, it is ours. This community paid for the sewer system and the water supply system. Oh, sure, you may have acquired some grants from the state or federal government, but that money came from us too. Number two, every time you raise water and sewer rates, more yards turn brown. In the eleven years we have lived here, we have always maintained a beautiful yard. This year, we had to let it go brown and wait on the fall rains. As a retired couple, we have to cut our costs to the bone. The next statement, although it is an item that is on the agenda, I'm going to read it now um, to be considered later on since I've already, since it all came in once. Next, what I put on your, on my front yard is none of your business. I have been talking to my neighbors about this, and without exception, they agree that you are overstepping your boundaries. What we do on our property, as long as it is legal, is our business. We did not sign up for an HOA-type regulations, and we don't want to live like we did. If I want to park my RV on my brown front yard, I should be able to do that. I cordially submit this for your consideration, Leonard McCall. So that is entered into the record. Um, any final call for public input? Then we will move on to number five additions and deletions from the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Just wanted to double check. Brandon, you don't have anything to add, right?
No.
Okay. Then I would like to invite Portland General Electric, who's here to join us tonight. Um, from my understanding, this is maybe the launch, is it the first stop in your new initiative or?
Second.
Oh, second, okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor Robinson and Lafayette City Council. Thank you for having us. My name is Wendy Belize, and we are, we're as part of a team. And you are correct, uh, we were in Scotts Mills not too long ago, and you were our second stop. Um, and the reason we're doing this because PGE is really wants to get more proactive in coming out to the communities and sharing what we're doing as well as um, having a dialogue with you and hearing about what's on your mind. And as a part of PGE being more proactive, I was your contact, Brandon, and the mayor and all of you, and um, we transitioned not too long ago to my colleague Tyler Kelly. He is your new rep, PGE representative and always a phone call away, um, so that um, we could be more proactive. My bandwidth was, I was just spread too thin. We really want to be more proactive. So I'm really, we're really happy to be here with that. I will introduce Tyler and have him come up.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you all for having us here tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, as Wendy just said, my name is Tyler Kelly. I've been with PGE. Just a little bit of a background about me. I've been with PG for just over nine years now. Uh, while I am relatively new to LGA team, uh, I've had the honor of being assigned as a new local government affairs manager for the city of Lafayette and for the entirety of the Yankton County. Um, I've actually been looking a little bit more into a lot of the Yankton County and specifically the city of Lafayette, and I've grown to really appreciate a lot of the information I've been seeing about your work here and your deep connection to your history and your desire for providing quality of life to your residents. I think that's something that we can all really connect on. Um, so uh, with us here today as well is our vice president of uh, strategy and advanced energy delivery, Larry Beckedall. He's been with the company for a very long time and is very knowledgeable and a leader in this space. So he's going to speak a little bit on some of the work that PGE has been doing to uh, help out in the community. Uh, but mostly the reason why we're here today is just to hear from you all, because I know that you all have issues that, you know, you want to work on and that we can, we want to figure out where we can best serve and assist with that. Uh, so without further ado, I'd like to bring Larry up here to move on with the presentation. Thank you all for having me.
Great. Thank you, Tyler and Mayor Robinson. Pleasure to meet you and council members, administrator, Brandon. Coming down here, um, I have to say your words were moving. When I hear democracy and I hear we can still disagree, but we can still be neighbors, it's really important. So, thank you. I appreciate the words. Um, so yes, Larry Beckedall, senior vice president for advanced energy delivery. What is that? Yeah, I haven't got, it's been around a while. Um, if I go into my history, just briefly, um, I was with Pacific Corps. Um, when I started, um, all over the Northwest, from Wyoming to Northern California to Montana, grew up in Montana. Tell you that to say, I've been in a lot of communities and, and, uh, and I really have a passion for what goes on in communities and how people come together. Uh, but more importantly, I left Pacific Corps, went to Clark Public Utilities District. So I was in Clark County there. Um, and Vancouver, and uh, to see that side of, you know, what is the utility? And then I went on to Bonneville Power and ran the transmission uh, for Bonneville and before coming to Portland General Electric. And I came back to, I came to Portland General Electric to connect between transmission, distribution, and customer, and to kind of see it from all directions. And uh, so I will just say this, no matter the color of money, the electrons are the same. The physics behind it is the same. Um, but it is a commodity that's really important, I think, to all of us, and it's become more and more important as we've evolved as our society. And uh, so when we talk tonight a little bit about things like, you know, safety, resiliency. Now, our communities really do depend on that happening. And so, uh, look forward to moving on that behalf. I don't know, um, in a small screen, uh, but, but there was a picture on the front that I, I, I have to give Tyler some credit to say, what was the, the locks? And are they still down in this area? Uh, at some point, we'd love to, you know, dig into a little bit of history. We found that.
They are still around, but a little bit different than beginning times.
And I'm, I'm assuming that's probably under, um, the Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, it's actually at the county parks. So if you're, if you're going, if you're leaving Lafayette, going uh, ninety-nine towards Newburgh, it'll be like right before you get to the train track, there's a little split, and it'll kind of go down and so that way. But it's still kind of part of the Lafayette community.
Well, you know, in that era, um, PG got started. So eighteen eighty-nine, um, from Willamette Falls to downtown Portland. In fact, the first long-distance transmission lines in the nation were, I don't know if everybody's aware of that. It started out as a single-phase DC line that went to AC and then through three-phase AC. And at the time, you had Chicago World Fair going on. There was this fight between AC and DC and who's going to win Tesla, you know, Westinghouse, Edison, and uh, AC won out at the World's Fair. Um, transmission line, why didn't we build it here? We like to think because we were innovative and thinking about the, the future. Um, I'm half afraid that they built their case, it failed. Nobody would know about it. So, um, so there is a rich history. And, and when we think about that, even as we were in Scotts Mills, we found that there was a dam there. They are still working on trying to remove parts of that. And it's like, okay, how do we help? What, what is it that we can do to make those connections? And so, as you think about the history here, love to, to uh, um, think about how do we partner and, and, and make those things happen? So, in, in terms of, um, we actually have twelve PGE employees who live and work here, which I was pleased to hear. It's kind of nice because uh, we can tap into them and, and try to think about, you know, how, how are they connecting? Um, we have a little under three thousand employees presently in the company, and uh, you know, to us, hearing where they live, what they do, uh, really makes a difference. Um, growth, two hundred and forty percent um, since nineteen ninety. And why I say nineteen ninety? Because we have not built any new transmissions since, actually, the seventies. So, growing two hundred and forty percent. Uh, we were recently in the city of Wilsonville, it grew three hundred percent. We go to Sherwood and Twolington, it's grown six hundred percent. I'm saying that in just in terms of, okay, we have these are growing. That's, can be really healthy if it's done well, people think about it. But we got a plan together. There's nothing worse than a surprise. And, and I know a city right now that we're dealing with, who has gotten a big surprise. And um, and, and, and so it takes partnerships. So anything you can do as you're thinking about planning, how can we be a part of that? How can we think ahead and, and get ahead of some of these things instead of it being a surprise and, and having to struggle? Um, you, you know, yeah, a number of residential, commercial customers you see there, you also see the franchise fee payments um, that we do here for the city as well. Um, and the next slide, uh, we talked about kind of our business and uh, some of the things that, you know, we focus on. And, and I'm going to go back. I know, uh, Mayor, you had a conversation with Maria, uh, my boss, and uh, we've done a lot to think about the, 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 January, February of uh, twenty twenty-four was not our moment of glory. Um, in fact, I call it the perfect storm. We had held off on doing rate increases for some time, and in January, boom, rate increases came. We had bills that were half December, half January, people trying to figure out what, what happened, what, you know, even to understand it was complex. Um, on top of that, we had a winter storm right after that. So a lot of customers out for up to almost two weeks. It was a really tough period of time. And then we talked about the next rate increase that was going to come. So, it did not land well. I know you provided a letter. There were a lot of letters across, from many communities. And our lesson learned, number one is, you're better off to do small chunks over time. You also need to really think about your cost and what can you do to control your cost? And I think it was made mention even in the customers, you know, questioning of, of the residents and the letter saying, okay, how much, um, every dollar that we spend is something from a customer that we need to really think hard about. So I, I challenge this all, you know, we are doing that presently, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well as we go. But storms, um, extreme weather, we're seeing it. Um, I think everybody's feeling it, whether it's heat, we're seeing mortality rates in trees much higher than we've ever seen, uh, which means potential for wildfire, trees falling into lines is not a good thing. And so as we think about wildfire and together in our communities, how we become more resilient as communities. Cyber, you, you, you're all dealing with that as well. If there's ways that we can help, um, we do have, you know, excellent. Kind of constantly into that, um, that we're happy to share ideas and thoughts as, you know, um, you're thinking about the city.
I actually had a question on that. So there was a city in Texas whose mayor had a threat, a death threat. Um, and the energy company has had a security system, CPS Energy, and they were able to reach out to the mayor's office, reach out to the city police and say, hey, there's a credible threat on social media. Do you have anything like that where you can kind of scale threats to like public officials locally?
We could.
Okay.
We could. And, and, um, you know, how we work through that to make sure we keep things private that need to be, et cetera. Um, happy to, to explore that. Um, we're all kind of learning in that space as we grow. Um, earthquakes, you know, we're all feeling that, that's, that's out there. In fact, we had to move one of our buildings in our control center. That is what we could see of, of the future. So, and, and finally, regional energy emergencies. I'll just say this, that um, there are concerns about do we have enough energy as a Northwest? We're bringing in a lot more in the wintertime from down south, um, that, which is great, uh, being there and available. Uh, is it going to be? Natural gas in a similar way. In fact, we have on October ninth, uh, putting together both gas and electric and saying to ourselves, how do we think about it? Because ninety-eight percent of our gas comes from British Columbia right now, uh, down the I-five corridor. There's a little bit that comes from the Rockies, um, but limited. And so, we've got concerns as we look at the future of our communities. Uh, how do we make sure that we have enough energy? And, and so, but just share food for thought that we were working on that. And as you're thinking about growing, you know, the, we want to be a partner together on that. Um, so, resiliency, batteries. We've added uh, five hundred megawatts of batteries. What does that mean? We have a system total of about four and a half gigawatts at its peak. So it's forty-five hundred megawatts. So roughly ten percent of that peak we now have in batteries. If I were to give you a little bit of a scenario, um, two summers ago, uh, during the hot spells, the peak cost of electricity was anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars a megawatt hour, when it's normally thirty dollars a megawatt. We were seeing these swings coming from California that were spiking and, and moving around. If you've heard of what they call the duck curve, it means when solar comes on during the day, and more than enough energy. In fact, they were paying us to take it, actually paying us to take it. So negative prices. Um, and then the evening would come, the solar would go down. You'd hear the sucking sound from the Northwest, pulling all the energy down into California. So they're paying us a lot. Well, the economy doesn't work well for very long that way. But the fundamental was that you needed something to levelize. So they put thirteen gigawatts of batteries in to California, and they have now effectively leveledized. So the prices this summer peaked at just over a hundred dollars a megawatt. So, does it make a difference? Batteries are new to our industry. Um, we think about where they're located. So we work with fire departments, Pacific Northwest National Labs helps us with safety and to think about how to make sure that we don't put them in places and how we operate them, how they're built, how they're, you know, the safety systems. You've heard fires associated with lithium, et cetera, thermal runaways. We've found ways to, to protect against that. But anyway, what I'll say is it's a new tool for us. And we're using it, we're taking advantage of it, and it's trying to help us keep our power costs down. Um, second, you know, modernizing the grid, um, as I mentioned, transmission, we haven't built since the seventies. And I could go into history of, of even from Bonneville. Bonneville has seventy-five percent of the transmission in the Northwest. It all came from the New Deal in the thirties. We were built all the dams. The forties, World War Two, so the aluminum industry came. And because of that, that's when the transmission was all built here in the Northwest. So, we haven't done anything since the seventies, but yet we've had a lot of growth. So, so as we think about that, how do, how do we move ourselves? Um, if I go, you know, clear, you know, and we think about uh, prices, and I, I know that we started with that, um, our operating costs. Um, we are reducing our operating costs. Maria's commitment, following all the letters, was that we were going to keep our prices below inflation. And, and with the pressure of power cost, you know, and what's been happening in the region, it's tough. So in fact, we had our first layoff in, in, since I've been there, um, this summer.
Have you kept your prices below inflation?
We have.
Last two years?
Uh, last year. I don't know if it's been two years.
It was last five years.
No. And that's.
About last ten years.
Not, no. I would say, when you got back ten years, now you're getting close. There was a period in there where, where, um, we were just doing small increments that was below inflation.
I have last ten years. How many years do you think your prices have been below the inflation rate?
Um, so between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, that period of time where we weren't putting rates in increasing.
Because of COVID or for other reasons?
COVID was the driver. Um, we made a mistake.
Post-COVID. Let's go twenty twenty-one to today. How many years do you think you're below inflation?
Uh, from that point, um, one, twenty, twenty-one itself. Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I said it. We hit eighteen percent in twenty twenty-four January. And, and unfortunately, you're making up for it back to twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. So, our commitment is to keep it under inflation now. And, and um, that's what we're working on. Um, yeah, I, fair cost allocation. I, I put that in there because, you know, I've heard a lot of people say data centers are causing inflated energy prices. We just passed legislation in the state of Oregon, uh, where we talked about cost causation. If you are causing that, you get to pay for it. So we can have special contracts with them now and have them pay for the uh, infrastructure that they're, uh, driving. So, things that are going on in Hillsborough. But we're also seeing it now, uh, potentially Woodburn and Salem. Um, data centers, you're seeing that. Um, data centers, you're seeing that nationwide. What we'd like to say is that, okay, let's when the aluminum industry came in, it built out the system. So let's leverage that again and help us build the system that we need. Let them pay for it. Let's not, you know, burden everybody. So so we're heading that direction and, uh, just calling that out because that's been a major issue for a lot of investors. Maximizing external sources of funding. If you've heard of us talk about a holding company in a Transco, we have transmission costs that are extensive and, uh, because we haven't built. So if we do a Transco, we can raise funds in a different way, um, to keep it cost pressure down for all customers. So so that's what we're trying to leverage. And, uh, happy to go into that sometime if if you're curious, um, but we're looking for those avenues. How do we do this and keep costs down for everybody? Offering customers programs, um, and and lower cost, we can, we can talk about that a little bit from our, um, our assistance program. And, uh, other residents here in, um, Lafayette, we have two hundred and twelve that are participating in our assistance program. And that's about fifty percent of the those that are eligible. So we know that, you know, again, more people can be helped, uh, with those programs. And those can be seniors, those can be low income, lots of different reasons why people are in that category. Um, but the program is there. We want to encourage people, uh, to be able to use that where needed. Wildfire, um, you can see, uh, we now have twelve zones, uh, across our service area, across the Lament Valley. Um, these are the high fire risk zones that we pay special attention to because they have the highest probability of of fires. And, uh, that's fueling, um, the configuration of the system and how far is a fire department. And, uh, all those considerations we take into account in determining where these are and how we locate. How do we harden them? Um, you can see where, uh, zone twelve there, um, becomes, you know, probably one of the closest here, but even as I drove, you know, in, looking at some of the vegetation, um, how best do we approach wildfire? How do we harden the system? There's lots of technology that we're putting in, um, the panel AI cameras, there are cameras that are looking for smoke. When they see smoke, they alert us. It's no longer somebody having to sit at the camera and watch it. It actually can detect it and tell us. So now fire departments are using that across all of our service area. And, uh, it's been a great tool, but we are looking for ways, whether it's covered wire or undergrounding. We've got to do a better job of thinking about wildfire and protecting ourselves. So as we have the meetings, you know, I encourage, uh, uh, everybody to participate, learn about, um, you know, what is, how do you protect yourself? What to do, uh, you know, your home and, uh, and and also working with us. And that could be new installations, um, I would start there. Again, if you have that opportunity, um, would you underground? It's a whole lot easier when it's a new facility than when it's something that has to be taken from overhead to underground. Um, energy and our energy supply, um, this kind of gives you a a feel for, you know, we've we've got some, you know, targets for the state, um, that are aggressive, um, but this gives you a flavor, you know, we are thirty six percent, uh, relied on natural gas, uh, generation right now, uh, hydro, you can see is twenty six percent, wind fifteen and solar four. I will say the solar will pick up, um. We're doing combination now, solar, wind and battery. So like hot days, you get a high pressure zone, you have zero wind. But you got a lot of solar. Mix that with battery, um, so you're trying to utilize the system in a better way because otherwise transmission is sitting vacant and can be used during that period of time. So we're watching this, happy to share with you, uh, at any time, you know, mixes, how you even as a community, uh, might be involved. Um, so you heard Tyler and Wendy talk about collaboration. And how do we do that? Um, we do have some committees that we're going to be putting together. I'll let maybe Wendy answer some questions about that, uh, where we'd like to have more interaction. But we'd also like to hear more, um, and and, you know, given, I'll I'll just say you have an administrator with some energy background. Um, I think it'd be great to, uh, uh, use utilize that a little bit and talk about what's possible. I think there's some great ideas that we can put on the table. Let me stop there and roll with the questions.
Okay, well, I want to acknowledge, first of all, your PGE. It's not a happy, fun conversation. Um, I want to be respectful of the fact that we are all professionals here. Well, I'm not a professional mayor, I just play one on TV, but, um, and I I want to address that elephant in the room, that it's not a, I I'm pretty sure I wasn't the only one that was like, oh, yay, PGE, this is going to be a fun conversation tonight. Um, I do appreciate Wendy. I met her last year when we sat down when we presented that stack of letters to Maria, um, that one of the things that I really pushed was you're not, you're not acknowledging the small cities at all. Um, celebrating this huge big thing over at a larger area. We don't, we don't celebrate that. We don't get, we don't get to benefit from that per, um. And one of the thing, just real quick, and then I want council to know that this initiative of you guys trying to dialogue with smaller cities, um, from what I was shared was, came out of that letter that we sent you guys. And so I just, I thank council for making that stance. But the one thing that I made very clear to Maria was, I understand that I don't, at the end of dialoguing, I get no say in your rates. Um, I can tell you my feelings on it, I can tell you my neighbor's feelings on it. But the one thing I can control is that if you're telling me our rates pay for X, Y and Z, I'm going to fight that my city gets their share of that X, Y and Z, not, although we did it at a larger spending area. But now I'm going to shut up because I already poured my heart out to Maria, but.
And I think, um, to, since Mary wasn't here to benefit, um, I do want to acknowledge that, Mayor, your leadership and this council leadership really provided us, um, valuable, um, feedback and insight. And absolutely, it was one of the driving reasons for how we needed to pivot very quickly about how we engage with smaller communities. So I I do want to say thank you, and this is, this is part of that effort. And we have, um, it's exciting. We have lots and lots of city councils that that will be traveling all over the valley, uh, the Bimilana Valley. So thank you for your leadership and and getting our attention.
This is a funny question.
Yeah. Wendy, remind me what your title is?
I'm a senior local government affairs manager.
Okay, Larry?
Senior vice president.
Okay, and I'm so sorry, the young, the young handsome man there.
Tyler Kelly and I in the local government, it hurts managers.
Okay, and how long have each of you been with PG?
Thirty-six years.
Eleven.
Nine years.
Nine years, okay. And, uh, we talked about how the last four years, one of them, the rate increases were under inflation. Did each of you get raises all for the last four years?
No. No, it's a year that I did not.
There's one year?
One year.
One year, same. Did you guys get bonuses last four years?
Yes.
But we're still raising rates higher than the rate of inflation. And I know none of you make that call, but you can understand why cities like ours, who have a lot of folks on fixed incomes, have have problems. To PG and frankly, like all three of you are paid by PG, all three of you are here. Do all three of you need to be here tonight?
Wanted Wendy to be here to make sure we make a transition. And Tyler would be here for sure, um.
And we we, I think, I think part of the reason we have Larry is, um, what we heard from the mayor last year is we wanted to really convey how important your community is, how all of our communities are.
What's your competition in our community?
Um, we don't, we have, we have assigned service areas, yes, in Oregon.
Um, I'm going to make a motion that we table this discussion and move on to the next agenda item.
I'll second that.
Okay, Wendy for the discussion? Okay, um, Kennedy, I have a motion on the table to, or a motion on the table to table this discussion for this evening. Um, can you please call and roll them?
Um, Council Paulson?
Aye.
Council, uh, Carswell?
Aye.
Council Golder?
Aye.
Council Ken?
Aye.
Council Maggie?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we thank you for coming out and presenting this very time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, consent agenda, we only have one item on there. Um, speak now if you need to pull it, if not. Yes, um, if someone would like to.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
As presented.
As presented, um, from the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, City Council meeting minutes.
Second. Okay, um, Kennedy, can you follow that?
Um, Council Carswell?
Aye.
Council Brother?
Aye.
Council Paulson?
Aye.
Council Maggie?
Aye.
Council Jeff?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda has been consented on and accessed. We are now on to our discussions. So our first one is Veterans Park preliminary design. Was everyone able to see or understand or read the printout that you guys were given? I know I went online to zoom in. Oh. Um, Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so as we were talking about, um, coinciding with the, with finishing up the park master plan upgrade, um, the comprehensive plan update, um, I had gotten with, um, Tetra Tech on just saying, hey, I think this, I think this park plan's got to move forward. Um, let's do some preliminary work on, uh, Veterans Park design so we can get in front of council as soon as the parks plan is is approved, so we can show the community we're doing some type of work for the parks plan. Um, so, um, I commissioned Gordon and Greg early, about a month or two ago to look at, um, a site plan based on some of the the discussions that we've had with the planning commission and city council. And kind of just kind of bring you that preliminary design tonight to kind of look it over. Um, if there's any concerns, you have any questions, Gordon's obviously here to talk about that. He's the one who designed it, uh, but we wanted to make sure this is the path we want to go forward before we start, um, hiring, you know, going off the bid, hiring contractors, et cetera. And so, um, in front of you is the is the design, um, Gordon, if you want to come up and, I guess, discuss anything in here that you want to go into detail with.
And real quick, I just want to point out, this is a question I had to ask Brandon because I was like, where's that adjacent piece of property in the diagram? And I was shared that that technically is not, it's our property, it's right away property, but it is not within the boundaries of the park. So we can still do stuff with that, but it doesn't fit under the plan. Just that made a lot more alha for me, so I wanted to share that with you guys as Gordon shares things.
Okay. So I'll I'll get going. So what you have here in front of you is a pretty picture. This is not designed. This could not go out for anybody to bid. There's no dimensions, there's no details. This is just, hey, is this what you guys want to see? Do we need to change, move, do whatever? So that's, that's where we are in the process. So it's a very flexible point in in the project. And as Brandon indicated, uh, Greg and I sat down and Greg said, well, I think this is what we wanted to. It's a dog park. We want to make it an enhanced dog park. Um, so that was the direction. And you can see the colors here show what's been done. And so I'll just say what that is quickly. So the red is a fence and you can see it splits the park in two. That's big dog, little dog. That's essentially what that is. And you will see that the two existing entrances, we're going to have to do stuff to make those actually ADA accessible, so.
Do both have to be ADA or just one?
Uh, only one of them to get into facilities, both of them, you got to be able to get in. I mean,
Yeah.
Right now, the fences are.
Standard dog parks, it's double fencing for safety.
Yeah, so that's also what you see here is on each one, there's a red square around it around the entrance. That's the dog gate. So essentially, you can't have a gate open and dogs go running out in the street.
And the bridge street one is the one that has the ADA that connected to the crosswalk, right?
Well, you have a crosswalk there, so we're putting in some concrete so you can get to the gate.
Yeah.
The other one on Washington is actually the, uh, more ADA accessible. You've got a sidewalk along the entire street there. We're coming in, putting some sidewalk inside so somebody can get to those new benches.
Okay.
And sit down at a bench. So anybody that's, you know, in a wheelchair or, uh,
Unstable, neck beat.
Unstable, they can get to these benches and get to the park. So that's your major ADA access. Uh, so you will also see there's four dog watering stations, two in each of the areas. Uh, we have to bring a water line to get that. Uh, we did put, uh, three extra benches, uh, several trees around one of the benches up on the north side. Eventually, that will give shade to the bench. Um, one of the other things, some of the fence has slats, some of it doesn't. So we're just going to put slats in to give a little separation between the yards and the fence, I I mean, the park.
Okay.
Um, so we were also told we want a flagpole with lights. We just plopped one down. Location can get moved, put anywhere, but we do have to bring power to that.
How tall is the flagpole?
What?
How tall is the flagpole?
However tall we want.
Yeah, however tall you want it.
I think that would just depend on what size of flag we want.
Yeah, flagpole, if I remember correctly, determines the size of it.
Yeah, there's minimum for, the taller the flagpole, the
The bigger the flag.
Yeah.
I would think with it being Veterans Park, it probably would be one of the bigger flagpoles in town.
Like bigger than city halls.
Yeah.
So, you know, no details on that right now, you know, tell us how tall you want it, we'll, okay? We can do that. We were told there's a memorial boulder. Now, our design had nothing to do with that holder. We're not doing anything with it. We're not doing anything with the memorial. Uh, I have some questions on whether they're going to be plantings, they're going to be.
You're marking the space, you're not designing.
Yes, I'm just showing where it could be. And I, we just plopped it down near the flagpole. Obviously, that can be shifted, moved.
Which is where my conver- my conversation started with Brandon because I was like, why is the flagpole there? And I thought we were using that patch area and it's because it wasn't part of the property.
So you know, one input, is that the right spot? Do we want to have a larger spot for the memorial so that you can do stuff? Other stuff besides a boulder? So that's all input that we'd love to get from you guys so we can adjust.
When I read this, is one side designated for, I know one's big dog, one's little, but have we designated which side is which?
No.
Okay.
You know, and even the fence, right now, it's just sort of splitting it.
Yeah.
Yeah, does it have to be that way? No. Um, but it gives you a good picture of what the intent is. I was even looking at this right now and thinking, ah, why did I make that ninety degrees? I could run it off at forty-five and it's easier to for people to walk in.
Oh, and I think the small dogs could use less space than the big dogs if it came down to it.
Sure. I mean, the space is big enough that I don't think it matters that much.
Well, I like that we designed it long way. The dogs can run instead of splitting the line down bridge to.
The other thing that that does, and one of the main reasons I did that, is that you can access either side and get to both little dog, big dog.
Like that.
So that's where we are right now. And obviously, the, we were given a, a limit on the budget also. So we had to say, well, this is what we think you can do.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's other things that could be done here, other trails, more plantings, all sorts of stuff that can be done. Uh, but that.
Yeah, not just initial cost, but the.
Right. Uh, there is, by the way, in irrigation. Uh there is, by the way, an irrigation system in here already. So when we put in this sidewalk over near Washington on the inside. Potential it hits that irrigation system and we gotta do, you know.
Get them moving, yeah.
Yeah, you know, irrigation system, asphalt's are notoriously schematic. And not very accurate, so we don't really know where those pipes are until we hit them.
Call ahead.
And we're still pretty confident that the the water stuff can be done in internally, right? A lot of the water line and the connection and the.
This smaller project.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, essentially, that's private.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just want to make sure, because as we talk.
Water's pretty fair.
I know, I just want to make sure, because I know we talked about that, but in terms of installing, we're still gonna be able to do that with the team we have, okay?
Yeah, but we still have to get it on the designs.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's where we are with this open for, and I know, you know, you guys probably want to look at this and maybe scratch a bunch of notes on it.
I just have two initial comments, uh first one is, I think the closer to the the one entrance or the other, that the benches can be, the better it is for our elderly. Uh residents, just, you know, not have to walk all the way to the middle of the place to sit down.
Like the ones on Washington?
Uh either either way, I mean, I, whichever entrance it is, but like, I'm looking at the benches in the middle here, right, like.
Well, there's one bench that's.
Is that removable though, or is that like?
Yeah, I'm sure it's concrete.
Okay. But that one with the trees, we technically.
I'm just putting thoughts out there.
That's okay, and I mirrored it on the other side, so there's a bench in the middle for people that do walk. And then there's two benches that are right near the entrance, I could scoot.
Where 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 am I missing?
On Washington Street side.
And the that's what he was saying was concrete.
Yeah, there and there, and there's sidewalks, so they can.
Perfect, no, that that that's all, that's that's my only input on that, that's great.
Yeah, and I love the detail of putting paved to those benches.
Right, and that, yes, that existing bench over on the south side.
One of those.
That can be moved, even if it's concrete or damn, public works put it in.
Yeah.
Brandon, do we need like any sort of signage put up where it's like a risk assuming? You're assuming the risk of bringing a dog here.
Oh, yeah, we we would put the standard like, you know, herby on dog, you know, um leash law, we would put the city, like, we would put all the stuff.
But that doesn't.
When it's officially a dog park.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, there'll be like herby a dog, it'll have like city of city code, and it'll have like dog on the leash, so we'll have all those signs when it's officially a dog park.
Okay.
Yeah, we probably talk about that.
My my only other piece of input, and I don't know how the council feels, but I would like to see the flagpole air on the side of larger than smaller.
Absolutely. And I do understand that lighted is important because of, you know, flag etiquette and rules. And we don't have staff to take it down each night. Um so I think in the long run, paying to light it is gonna save us compared to having to pay someone to. It's, yeah.
Feels more like a something that's going.
Especially because there's a memorial there, and I think that the details of what we decide to do with that memorial boulder or what direction we want to go. That doesn't have to be decided in order to start on the design, I think.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
I just need to know where you want it.
It should be close to the flagpole, especially.
Which is where it is here, yeah.
That's where it is, but the whole thing, flagpole, boulder, do you want it more in the corner, do you, yeah.
I like it along the street.
Yeah.
Whether it's bridge or Washington, bridge seems a little bit more open.
Yeah.
Because of the trees, because then if someone wants to enjoy it, they don't have to go through the whole dog park.
Yeah.
So pros and cons of the two streets.
I prefer bridge.
I like, I like where it's at.
Bridge is a, it's gonna be more visible, there's more cars going by. You won't actually be able to get out and go walk over to it, there's no sidewalk on.
Yeah, and I understand that.
Oh, yes, I mean.
Not yet, right, could be in the future.
Yeah, I like, I like that it's. Towards the, you know, sides, it's still in the middle, so it's prominent. I like, yeah, I.
You know, on the Washington side, isn't there just that giant concrete?
That's what I'm saying, it's not part of.
Darkens it all out.
Yeah.
And lots of big trees there too, so.
Yeah.
Which we can still do something with that area, but since it's not within the park limit, we actually don't have to be as strict with.
In the future, you want to put a sidewalk, eventually at some point that you walk.
On bridge?
On bridge.
That would be the hope.
Yeah.
So then that then passersby's can draw them on the memorial and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my only thought is.
One of the things I was thinking, just to, is this fence I got coming like that?
Now I have to save that paper, could you do one, it's public record?
Then it gives a whole, it makes a whole lot of here, a lot of.
Well, and I.
Did you see what it was doing?
Which then makes me feel like that, which also gives a bit more space to the other side.
Yes.
And gives, I I immediately was drawn to like big dogs.
Up on the top.
And.
Yeah.
Let the big dogs.
Let the dog, let's have him be on the big boulder, what? Um, yeah, I I see no. Um design issues with this. I think, I think it fits our, I think our overall goal was to do a dog park correctly, but not previously.
Hey, um so I know we we mentioned dog um sidewalks two times in this conversation. Do we want to look at doing sidewalk, a small sidewalk project?
In front.
Adjacent to.
They're already out there.
Yeah.
So, well, I mean, not right now, I mean, as part of the project, because I mean, we can do some type of connection, and I think we can do park SDCs to have a sidewalk in front. If we want to look at that, but I don't know, I mean, it just came up twice from two different council members.
We look at it.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in seeing if that's.
Feasible.
I mean, it's a desire, but is it?
I love the idea, we just have to see the numbers.
Yeah, but I think the overall.
I know you have a ditch right there.
That's why I was just gonna say.
If you do a sidewalk there, you're gonna have to do storm drainage as well.
Could we do a park sidewalk and not a s- street sidewalk? Does that make sense, like?
You mean inside the park?
Yeah.
Sure.
Kind of like we have a path.
You mean like bring it around into the park as like?
Yeah, so. Oh, my small little.
Around the monument?
Yeah, so instead of putting this bench here, or pulling that one, putting a bench over here with by the monument. And, yeah, you might have to go into where the dogs are at, right? But having, having a sidewalk within the park.
I meant the sidewalk on the side on the street.
Yeah, but it was a ditch.
But I don't, I I kind of like the idea of push the fencing in and put the, put the sidewalk kind of right around the monument right out front.
And and so.
Approaching it kind of like.
So it's.
Um by comments, they have like the.
Because this is an already existing fence, right?
Yeah.
So our only difference would be we would pull the fence and just put this as a fence. I mean, there's a little bit of thinking, but I would like to see.
That's demolition and new.
Yeah. And.
And sidewalk, so.
Or if it's.
Great time.
Yeah, so it's cause toss issues there that you.
So then the other question.
Nothing to do on the weekends.
I heard that.
Yeah, I I like the idea of like paving the whole monument section. Not the whole thing.
These are just design ideas, we gotta get numbers back and figure out.
Yeah, this is just all.
Instead of just a flagpole in the middle of the grass with no way to get to it.
Right, yeah.
I know one thing that I think we talked about, we just didn't get it on here. Uh but a feeler out there for all of you, uh we have some old hydrants down at Public Works.
For the dog?
That, you know, we've all seen pictures, texted from Facebook, you know, whatever, of painted hydrants. That, you know, looks like a, maybe a a dog or.
Oh, we could have a contest.
We could put a hydrant at each of the large dog, small dog park and paint it up.
Yeah.
May Robert?
The dogs love to salute hydrants.
We call that a mural.
Uh probably not me.
We can do a community thing when.
Yeah, you and our context.
Yeah, like, like.
Paint it, yeah.
Let let either be a kids' contest or an own contest to design the two fire hydrants.
I mean, those hydrants are just sitting down there, they're not usable for what we use in the spare parts.
For the dogs.
So then do we.
And it brings in culture, right?
So, I mean, do we, it seems like everybody likes.
The overall.
The overall schematic, obviously it's had some tweaks, but maybe in the next meeting, maybe we can come back with what it would look like for a sidewalk to go through? What it would look like to do sidewalk?
Yeah, I don't think we need a sidewalk to go down the whole thing, like the whole long. But but to the monument.
Maybe look at the sidewalks, it's gonna be a crap shoot anywhere over there, maybe we look at doing some sidewalk work.
Wow, the roads are ready.
So giving us that quick option of, here's what it would cost to put in an official sidewalk, road sidewalk. And here's what it would take to put in.
It's already shut down.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that.
Oh, no, 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 they don't.
The same fence.
No, well, that would be quite a special.
You can give me temporary a hundred thousand dollar authority, you know, and then I can probably get something done in the next two days, but.
But I would, yeah, I would like to see what it would cost to put a little paved path to the the monument.
So you want a cost for a regular sidewalk?
That's what she wants.
Yeah.
And then a cost for something on the inside.
No, you don't forget that.
Yeah, couple ideas.
Yeah, which then if the one comes in lower than the other, then says, look.
We think like November, probably, November council meeting?
Sure.
November council meeting, come back?
Didn't hesitate, he was like, sure.
Yeah, I will, I I think that part of our goal with doing Veterans Park first was that this could be a speedy. Things I'd like to see it back sooner than later, I don't want to have any special meetings.
I mean, the winter.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you right away that the sidewalk on the inside would be cheaper.
I know.
Hide that ditch and just.
Yeah, you can.
I don't like those ditches over there, but.
Bring you do anything you want.
You can put animals and ask them for a bunch of older.
Yeah, and you probably have. And if you put sidewalks there, you probably want.
The dirt sounds like herb.
Okay, so.
There's a lot of stuff in.
I guess first, does council feel like they've shared everything that needs to in order to have them pick it?
Yep, I'm ready to leave that.
Gordon, do you have everything you need?
Feel like you have everything you need from us?
Um, what I feel like is, okay, I've got some options to bring back before you.
Yeah.
And we don't have details yet about how much room. We want for the memorial, and so that would be something that I would, is it in the right spot and?
I think it's in the right spot.
If you want more room for it or plants around it.
I think that the more we.
Making sure, maybe there's a little bit of room to do a bench right there eventually, if somebody wants to sit there.
Like bench and plants, that stuff can be added later if they're.
We need to leave space. We could go after an organization or a private person that wants to donate a bench and memory.
Yeah.
So, just something for you guys to give me some feedback on is, well, how big of an area do you think? You might want for that, because it'll impact where I put this fence. This looks okay.
I think it looks fine, I'm just saying like, if that, where it, where it's looking like it'd all be sitting, if a two-person bench can be right there, it'd be great. Just if it's too tight for that, I would say, okay, let's.
Oh, no, there's plenty of room for benches.
Yeah, one bench is fine.
It's just, I don't know how big the boulder and and if you want.
I don't think we're gonna have the world's biggest boulder.
And if you might be doing.
All landscape around.
Then you get to go after Grant funny enough.
Do we want to leave it, uh do we want to leave a spot for any like doggy, like exercise stuff? Or is that something maybe later on?
It's not what a dog park is.
Well, I mean, like, you know, like, like doggy stuff.
So we're bringing back the park.
No, you know, they have like little like slides and like.
Okay, there's plenty.
Uh so, yeah, I think it's just the sidewalk thing, that where the boulder is, that whole thing, and then just whether or not we can get like a two-hundred-foot tall flagpole.
Massive flag.
Tall and downtown Newbury.
Are you serious about the two-hundred-foot?
Wait, can it?
No, about one-ninety.
Hey, if you want to do it on record, I mean, I'm all about self-promotion, so if we want to go for like the for like the tallest. And I'm all down for Nico Stretch.
So you're under the theme, you're gonna have massive.
You're gonna have McMinville out for telling us.
So for example, are you thinking maybe a flagpole like the size of the one over the community center then, or the school? You thinking bigger than that?
Newbury.
Yeah, level.
Now, I will let you know that I'm working on something at LCAT to possibly put a flagpole over Burkins too. Then looking, we're looking at possibly.
It's mutually exclusive.
No.
Well, I know, I'm just letting you know, like, so I think that's gonna be a a decent one too.
Yeah.
Similar to like.
I'm game with as many as we want to put.
All right.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Gordon.
Yeah, appreciate this.
Yeah.
Well, he's still, he's still got two more agenda items.
Okay.
Hi Fred.
Okay, so we are going to move on to eight B, which is street improvement projects. Um I was not here for you guys' discussion last month, but I do want you guys to know I did watch it and try to absorb it. Of what led us to tonight, Brandon's staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so in this year's budget, we have.
Sorry, that was for C that I made that statement for, sorry, but I did, sorry.
The twenty, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget included three hundred thousand dollars dedicated to street projects. Um want to start working on what the project's gonna look like for the end of this year. Um after we finish bridge, we want to keep the momentum going, we're doing great work, um everybody is a team to to improve the infrastructure in town. So while we're in the construction, go, we start talking about the next street improvement project. So in front of you is a list of projects that city staff feels um are probably the most important for the city. Um but we want to dialogue with you to see if this is something that you would like. Um the the schedules that we have, if you think there's another street that may need more attention. Um the reason why we wanted to focus on Madison is because we're already doing a lot of work on bridge. And Madison is another gateway to town, we can also add sidewalks to that, um enhance uh ADA ramps, sidewalk pavement separation. Um and then also work on the actual street we have similar to uh Bridge Street. Um I also know there's discussion about connecting all the bridge from third to second to line up with the street. Um the pedestrian crossing and all the work being done on bridge between bridge and twelfth. Um and then also we discussed Canyon View needs, is in massive need of a ship seal. I don't know if you've driven down Canyon View recently, but it's probably one of the worst residential streets in towns. Um so we wanted to look at addressing that too. Um in the projects below, there's some possible combinations to consider. Um I guess that we have three hundred thousand dollars, but we all know there's gonna be cost overruns. Um so we'd like to kind of top that out at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So um there's a couple of possible, possibility of combinations to consider. Um one, two A and three, one and two D, two A and two C, two C and two D, or then just two B alone. Um kind of an à la carte kind of plan if you want. Um if you think there's other streets that we consider, we can come back to those later on, but this is just a staff recommendation to take a look at tonight.
And you mentioned a little bit of buffer in case we go over. But this isn't like the ARP funds where if we didn't spend them, we lose it, if we come under what's in our budget, that rolls over to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this will, this will be, this will be street money, any type of sidewalk installation? If you want to go to sidewalk installation and ADA ramps, I think there's some S- street SCCs we can use for that.
Uh I've, I'd have to look into STP, if the STP says sidewalks. Then it's in your CIP, then you can use.
So we still need to be careful about that though, because we're not gonna have many SDCs.
Yeah, I think that that hit kind of what's in my thought of like, I want to see repairs on the roads that we need it and we have the money, we have the money. But I don't want to be so nearsaying like, big bang for our buck right now and wish that we had kind of carried money over for a bigger project.
Sure.
So.
We will, uh we, if the transportation bill does pass, it looks like it's going that way. We will definitely, we will see some additional money coming into the city yearly on streets as well, so. We'll probably see closer, you know, we'll probably see closer to six hundred thousand dollars or so compared to the work we're seeing now. So.
Okay, I probably, we probably shouldn't talk about the future of traffic money right now, that's a whole new can of worms. Okay, so anyone have? I guess any questions on what each of these are?
Not just what I inputted, and I know fiscally it doesn't make sense with the budget we have laid out, but I think two A and two B makes sense to do together. But I know it puts you over the limit, but that seems like.
Well, they do make sense to to do together, but.
I know fiscally myself, but.
So I, I was actually walking out there tonight before the meetings and. You know, it's sort of split up highway to railroad, railroad down to the park. If you were gonna do one of those into highway to railroad.
So.
That's a little bit. That's a little bit worse condition, yeah.
Are we looking at that like next year we might have, how much?
If he's saying there might be stuff coming in, which is just. This might make sense to hold off, it's the truth. It might make sense to hold off until next year, so we're, we can look at just doing both of those. Cuz it's gonna be more cost-effective to do them at the same time.
Well, we have three hundred now, we might be able to do both of the possible.
What if we did like?
But that's what I'm saying.
I agree, I'm agreeing.
Like if we did one and three, that finishes off bridge that we were able to tackle the whole bridge road. And it takes care of Canyon View, but that only spends about a hundred thousand, which saves some money to put towards.
Yeah, I just don't think that portion of bridge was the constituents' biggest concern.
I don't think it is either.
I agree with you. I'd rather use that money in next year to make a bigger impact if that's the case.
Well, and I think no matter what we choose, I think it's important for us to acknowledge that the city is looking at that side of town.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that because I know that it's been like last year, the request to pave that one road and it was said that. It doesn't add for the amount of citizens that is at Water Street.
Yeah.
At it. And then we went on and continued on our bridge work, but so at least we're exploring.
No, and and I think this, I think a lot of this is feasible, it would just be a lot easier if we have the money this year and. Plus what we might have laid out for next year, we might be able to knock out a little more in one piece. I think Brandon would agree, when we get bids, they're doing more at once, we get a little better price per square.
So it might be worth, as much as it's nice to keep the momentum of doing projects one right up to the other, it might be worth this wait a year.
Right, Brandon, you can put on that.
Yeah, well, you mentioned a minute ago about spending four hundred thousand dollars. Um, we do have three hundred thousand dollars that are unappropriated in streets. I don't think, I don't, I would hate to do a budget amendment so early in the year. But we may be able, if if we wanted to do the project, we can do in a budget amendment. To bring that extra money into our call for suspend this year.
Something you might wanna put on, I mean, I mean.
And I mean, if that's in the sense of the council.
But something you might wanna look into on the financial side and see what.
I mean, we, I mean, we can do whatever we need to, you're the bearers of the fruit, but that's why we, we have three hundred nine thousand dollars put away. For another, for later on, but if the council felt, hey, you know, let's do this, this and this, we can always make the finance happen cuz we have the money.
I think I'd wanna chew on that idea versus waiting till next year when there's a little more wiggle room. I think I might chew on that, I'm not sure how I feel about that.
So. Are we looking at either chewing on it, but like that our focus seems to be two A and two B?
So did we get it um, a bid if we did both of those, the schedule A, B together?
Do you mean two A and two B?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I mean, you can always, I mean, it even says on the bids, um, I mean, all bids can not be accepted. I mean, we have that.
I was just wondering is like, cuz those were bitted as individual.
No, I think these are estimates, I don't think we've gone out.
Yeah, 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 we haven't got anything yet until we get approval on this, where council wants to build a street.
They were, those two were done together.
We have done that. Before on projects where we have multiple schedules for a paving project. The one thing you gotta be careful about on that is, you've gotta tell them, okay. This is the base bid. If we're gonna award something, it's gonna be this, cuz otherwise they don't, they could get a small project and. They don't want just the small project. Now their mobilization just went out.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, cuz two A and two B together, that's pretty good size.
The project. That makes sense.
And then you look, and you looked at the mobilization cost on the chip seal, right? I saw the email yesterday, you were talking about the, the Yankel County chip and seal cost. Okay, okay.
I, I, yeah, we did, right?
Yeah.
So what, what are the differences between a chip seal? And a overlay or grind and inlay? So overlay or grind and inlay, you're getting like at least two inches of new asphalt. And that does two things, it's, it's a little bit structural, but it also kicks an ADA. So.
It's a big enough improvement that.
Right. A chip seal is not structural.
It's a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the county does it all over the place, but it is.
Some way rode, except for.
Yeah, it is a surface treatment.
But the, but the powers that be see it as not an improvement that kicks an ADA.
It doesn't kick in the ADA, it's just a.
Repair.
Surface improvement. And actually, you know, Canyon View, if you walk it, it looks bad, but structurally it doesn't. You don't have rutting or anything, so a surface treatment could work there. And it just makes the driving surface better.
How many houses on Canyon View?
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Like not like the portion that we're paving?
Uh, probably twenty-five or so, thirty?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pretty decent sized block.
I mean, I've driven it many times, but I.
And with Canyon View not seeing a lot of.
Oh, yes, it's a L-shaped.
Chip seals, probably a better route to go with that one.
Yeah, I just don't think it's an urgent.
Yeah, I wouldn't put chip seal out on Madison.
Right.
I wouldn't ask.
Sure.
Okay, so counselors, counselors that haven't spoken up, I wanna make sure that. You have a chance to. Chime in if you want, not forcing you to.
Oh, one, one more comment. So I know it's in the twenty-six budget, which means. It would have to be, construction would have to be done before June thirty. Or it goes over into the other year. In order to do that. You're, you're bidding that you get some good weather in April, May. You're probably bidding it out in February, so you're probably starting design next month. So just a, a time. Issue if you, we want to do it in twenty-six.
I mean, that's just another reason to wait here, where we compare those two things together.
Cuz then we can be ready to do it at the end of, we don't have to wait till the next end of the next year, we can just, until the second year funds are available.
Brandon, what are your thoughts on? And I know, I know you wanna get these projects knocked out, but what are your thoughts on kind of, so we can compare those two big ones together?
I think we should at least do something. I mean, we have money there, I mean, even if it's a small project like a chip and seal along Canyon View or something, I think we should at least do something. Um. But, I mean, again, you are the policymakers. I, I, I would, I would hate not to do anything and, and. Especially if costs go up next year, I mean, we're seeing with some of the economy stuff is going, I would be worried that that cost may not be as tight as it is this year.
Sure, that's what works down this year.
So a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is big enough to get paving companies attention. It won't be their top project, but it's big enough. That's not a throwaway project for them.
So then, can we look at doing an estimate or putting out a bid to see what it would be to do those two projects together?
Yeah, I think that's where I, I wanna do them together, even if that means we need to explore the idea. Explore it, uh, we mentioned we might be able to get the other hundred thousand from street funds to do that. I would rather explore that and try to do the two projects together than do something small.
Unless you wanna look at doing another shoot that needs a chip and seal it, so if we're gonna chip and seal Canyon View, maybe we chip and seal another, another shoot or two. I mean, it's like one twenty-five, one thirty.
I'm just feeling. The other projects are more in need.
Well, and if we're talking about a potential like just for sake of numbers, right, ten percent increase on costs next year, asshole's down right now, could go up ten percent, we don't know. I'd rather do a four hundred thousand dollar project and save forty grand than a fifty thousand dollar project and save five.
Mm-hmm. I understand that too. Okay, so. Seeing two A and two B would come out together?
Uh, just another thing to think about, and I brought up a minute ago, but the transportation bill can be a game changer if it passes. What it can do to projects next year.
Then we'll have that for other projects, I mean, it's not like this and we.
Yeah, I, I know, I just, I just wanna make sure that, you know.
I know, I don't wanna start spending or even like. Chewing money, like, because then it sounds like we're.
Anyway, we don't have.
So, well, and then support of it.
Well, no, not spending money that we have, but spending money that could possibly come down, so if we do it now, it may be cheaper than it is next year. Because next year, things go up, they're gonna start charging us more, obviously, gas goes up, oil goes up. Car registration goes up, that's gonna be a cost on us, so if we do it this year before the bill, if the bill's gonna pass, most likely, if we get ahead of it now. We can probably at least try to avoid some of the cost increase, so it's kind of.
Both sides.
Both sides, I know.
Same, like, why can't we find out now what it would be to do those two big projects?
I'm cool with that if you want to.
Yeah, I like that idea. Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, with design on two A, two B.
Two A, two B, and see if we can make it work to.
We, I mean, we have the money, it, it just all depends if you wanna spend that money.
I can put it in schedules.
I think it, I think.
Few options.
It's a pretty little project, like, putting two A and two B together since we have the money. Whether we do it together or separate, it's still gonna cost, but to do it together makes it another really good size project.
Well, less traffic interfering.
And one time, not a, oh, we just finished construction on it, now we're gonna start again.
Okay, so that does include some ADA ramps, and it does include some. Uh, extruded curves to separate the sidewalk. From the traveling.
Okay.
So there's, it's not just the paving.
Awesome, great.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we taking next month or are we taking?
Next month for, I, what I'm hearing is start designing on this. Put it together so that we can bid it out like February. Is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
I want, yeah, sooner the better since we're on the timeframe of it. Okay, moving on to eight C, we should have gotten Gordon a chair tonight. Um, sorry, my regulations. So. Now we're on to the agenda, I'm not saying that I pop myself up with you guys.
Okay, so, so one more thing before we finish up A B, so while he's working on the bids.
The design.
The design, um. I'm taking that as I should probably work on.
Pulling off that money.
I'm pulling off, bringing in a possible budget amendment if needed, because it looks like.
If needed, yeah.
Be ready for that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make sure I'm, I'm, everybody's on the same page before I work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, now you gotta update your presentation for later, so you just.
Oh, no, this is for this, for last year.
Okay, um, now we're on to eight C, so yeah, I caught myself up, uh, blah, 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 um. Brandon. Staff report.
Just everybody at home, so they're looking. So in front of you, you have, um. Some photos, uh, let me bring these up. So over the past few months, we've been discussing, um. Driveways, I think this all started with front yard parking and how do you define a driveway, what's a driveway? Um. A driveway, according to the LZDO. Is for corner prop, well. The current requirements include for corner properties, driveways must be located at the farthest point from the intersection. A driveway definition is defined as a minor private way used by vehicles and pedestrians. To gain access from approved public a- access or right-of-way onto a lot of parcel. And then parking in yards, driveways are the only exception for vehicle access in front yards. Parking outside of a designated driveway in a front yard or yard adjacent to the street is prohibited. So we wanted to showcase to you on what. Are perceived to be improper driveways, at least according right now to the current code.
I wanna make it very clear, we are not targeting these homes, they are just for random examples.
Yes. So obviously, you see in front of you, um, you see a lot of gravel. Here, um, there's no real defined driveway for that, uh, to truck to park. Next to, you see another one where you have people parking in the driveway, and then you have a little bit more of, uh.
Front yard.
Front yard that's being used at the driveway.
Was, was.
We, was. Yeah, was. We have one here, this is one, this is actually one property where you have a driveway. But all along outside that driveway, you have people parking along the gravel and then. Again in front, so essentially this is serving as two driveways, one of them is an approved driveway. One of them is not an approved driveway, and you can already see the encroaching onto the gravel, um, on some of those.
One side he's got six cars, the other side he's got three in the front lawn.
And, and, and there's no issue with the amount of cars.
Is that all one property?
Yes.
Oh, okay, the yellow and the bluish color threw off, I thought there were two neighbors, okay.
And then, um, another one here that it's, it's improved very well, I mean, the gravel's laid out very well, nice. But it's considered a front yard, it's not an approved driveway.
He put all gravel in, so he can park his cars on it.
And then next. And then next to that, you see another lot that just has parking everywhere, no defined driveway. Parking on gravel on an open lot. Now below that, you see permitted driveways, what a driveway is supposed to look like. So by showing you these photos, a few things that council can decide. Council could decide right now, the driveways that we currently have structured and permitted are the way we wanna continue. Um, allowing driveways to be in town. Um, you can say, let's look at expanding driveways to be gravel with a very loose definition. Or we can even test the planning commission at looking at expanding impervious cover, impervious cover is. The amount of space the lot has for use that's not on the structure, so for parking, landscaping, other incidental things for the property. Right now, I think it's like thirty to forty percent, if I'm not mistaken, on most lots in town for the impervious cover.
Three.
Thirty, thank you.
Yes, so I mean, so depending on if, what that, so if we wanna expand drive, we may have to look at expanding, um, the, the coverage of a lot. Because right now, most of those designs for the driveways are gonna stay within that thirty percent lot coverage. Anything outside of that, we would probably have to look at expanding what lot coverage would be, and you know, the standard right now is about thirty. I know you had something on, you were gonna share something about driveways.
Uh, sure, so Brandon asked me from an engineering standpoint, uh, where we stand on that. So in the development code, we typically say one driveway per lot. There are special circumstances. Um, specifically like a large commercial. Uh, you can have two driveways for circulation. Um, but typically for residential, it's one driveway per lot. Yeah, there is a distance from intersections. And that's for site distance, that's just a safety thing. And then we have design standards. That show what a driveway section looks like in the right-of-way. So that's your, if you were looking here.
Like your ceiling jokes, your approach, your.
This is where the sidewalk is and coming down to the asphalt. So we have design details for that, and it's concrete and it tells the thickness and all that, but it also indicates. That on residential driveways are fourteen to twenty-four feet wide, so twenty-four is max. Fourteen is mid.
So the houses that have already paved. The one, the whole car garage driveway, and then they have it paved. For that RV parking or the third parking.
Once, once they're on site, they can do that, it's the driveway that the code, them, the design standards cares about.
The apron with?
Yeah, the apron with where it crosses the sidewalk. Once you're on the private property. Our standards, design standards don't say, hey, you've gotta stay there, they could go out like this. And I've seen that, and I don't know if the, your development code has.
Yeah, but you're saying from the driveway standard size, you're talking to just the entry.
Yeah.
Okay, so where do, where do RV pads come into this?
What?
Where do RV pads come into this? Cuz this is longer than twenty-four.
Longer than twenty-four feet.
You know, when you have like a two-car garage and then right next to that, they have the RV pad. Yeah, exactly, that's twenty, that's more than twenty-four feet.
Right, so that would have to be something that they go in.
Off, off the apron.
Off the apron.
Yeah, off to the side.
Here's my next question, and I think you're gonna tell me the same thing twice. But if they have an RV pad and it's gravel, but it's not on the apron. Currently, that's permissible.
In the side yard.
In a side yard, so from my standpoint, yes, I don't know if your code says anything about.
Like if you have a gravel.
So here's my question. The, the picture with the improper driveway, you mentioned they put in the gravel as they park their cars there?
That's in the front of the house, though.
That's a, they're taking the front yard.
Yes.
That's the front yard.
So, and from my understanding from asking Brandon and Robert. The side yard starts at the front of the house.
Corner of the house.
Not the front of the yard. So.
So as somebody who actually lives near this. And at first I wasn't sure how I felt about it. But as somebody who cannot pull out their driveway because we have so many commercial vehicles. Parks on the road, I applaud this person. We're taking at least some effort into making it look nice. Instead of, you could literally cannot drive down my road without hitting or or being close to being hit by a car. Because of all the commercial vehicles that are parked. So if we're gonna go after driveways, maybe we should start also going after the excessive amount. Of vehicles that are happening on that side of town. Because my neighbor has four. Four work vehicles. My other neighbor has multiple children who all have cars and they are blocking in our road. So this may not have gone about it the, the right proper way, but I applaud this person for not putting all of their vehicles on the road and yet again. Blocking people's ability to drive down roads. So this, this is a multi-tier issue.
All this standard is talking about is the throat.
I understand that, this is a bigger, this is a bigger issue.
Is there any other, I wanna be respectful of Gordon.
Of course.
No, I, I wanna go the route you're going. I think.
This is frustrating.
Yes, but. Um, is there any further questions on what defines a driveway for Gordon?
It cannot be grown.
No, there.
No, it can be.
It can be.
The new ones. Are supposed to be concrete, but after you get on private property, would our, our design.
Within the apron, new, newer homes, like if the home was built or if they're changing their driveway, within the apron, it cannot be grown.
It's supposed to be concrete.
Okay.
For our design.
But our code allows for a side yard to be gravel. Two very different things.
Okay, so.
One's in the right of way, one's in private property.
I think. I think we all from aging, the nation, as Counselor Kit said, like. This is a multi-tier issue and it's one issue that's gonna push into another issue. It's gonna snowball something else. There's cause and effect all over this. Um, I need to know, are we looking at this from a safety aspect of why we're talking about? Where people can park on their property right now, or are we looking at it from an aesthetic?
I think, I think, I think we're gonna look at it from whatever angle.
Okay, I just.
I mean, I understand why we don't want things to look trashy. I get that. But this one house, they, they put the effort into making it look at least decent. Um, so I, I get that a lot of this looks bad. But if there's, I don't know, like, we're gonna force one code, we should be enforcing some of the parking codes.
Well, part, part of the problem is, is people have tons of kids. There's nothing we can do about that.
People have lots of cars.
Park further down the road. It's, it's part of life. We can't go. Saying each house, you're only allowed three cars. We can't.
Work vehicles that are quite large that are block, I, I contact Brandon.
It's also just standard residential vehicles.
If I'm a painter, my work gives me a painting van. Yeah, I, clearly I don't do work, man work, I'm making this stuff, right? If I, if I have a painting van that my work sends me home with. And you know, I need to park on, I'm gonna park on the street, right? Like, that's legal. There's nothing wrong.
You might just have a po- po- park two blocks down and walk.
Society has changed where they're sending work.
Sorry.
However you feel about it, I think that's some way of some businesses skirting having to pay for storage for their own vehicles and putting it on the homeowner's.
Cause I mean, they, they, they pay, they pay more for those employees to drive home.
Well, yeah, and some.
Tear more gas, more, yeah, no.
Some get um sent out from wherever location.
So we can't just like ban people from parking.
I'm not saying ban, but like my neighbor has a boat that blocks part of his driveway. He has two vehicles and he has two work vehicles. So between his driveway and, and this is not just because of inconveniences, man. This is a good, this is an example. We've got a boat, we have a car, we have a truck, then we have a work van and another one cross, a park. Across the street. So he's, because he has his boat, he can't park his, at least one of his work vehicles there. So he's now parking it and I've had to call Brandon, like it blocks the fire hydrant. Like one day it just outright blocked the fire hydrant and I took very short, sent to Brandon, but. This person is a perfectly lovely person because they choose to have uh an extra thing like a boat. Or anybody who has anything extra and their, and their driveway is small is now in.
Can I get that, but if they're moving their vehicle as much as they have to.
Well, that's where I'm gonna, how strict do we wanna be on where they can put in their yard their boat? Because if we're gonna be very strict, it's gonna put it in the driveway. And then their cars are gonna move out because they're not gonna put them.
It's also a safety issue. Anytime there's eh ambulances or anything that's trying to go down the street, they barely fit down the street at this point.
Well, that's not a parking issue, that's a.
So because we don't. We, this is a growing issue, especially in our neighborhood. I don't know about the other neighborhoods, but especially in our neighborhood, Joe's in the neighborhood. It is a huge issue over there and it is a safety issue because you can't see around these vehicles because they're so large.
Kids everywhere.
Kids everywhere. Kids are darting out in front of the, in between these large work vehicles. So this is a multi-tier.
I think this is an issue of whether that street should be a no park, no street parking street. I think that's very separate from what we're talking about with drivers.
So with this, so this person found a solution for all their vehicles. They put them in their front yard.
But that's not a solution.
But it's.
It's not a solution. It's against our codes. It, there's a lot of issues with that. I get their frustration, but.
I'll have to put my RV in my driveway and then my cars on the road.
And you have the right to do that.
But that's what I'm saying. You have the right to do that. As long as you're moving your cars every so often, you know, it's first come, first served. Who gets there, you might have to. Park two blocks down. And I get the frustration, but we can't tell people. You can't have a boat on your property. I mean, if it. Parks there for a year.
Yeah.
Year, everybody reported it. So where, yeah, everybody reported it. And it's, where do we enforce and where don't we?
Now they moved another broke down part there.
Yes, they did.
Which one? Robert's like, I'm on the neck.
I'm on it.
No, here, here's my, it's, I mean, we can go into the one offs of like, you know, the.
Bye, Gordon.
But I think, I think that the, the issue at hand here is driving. So we can go into the anecdotal evidence of street parking. But I'm sure. Everywhere in the city, people get frustrated about cars parked on the street.
Grant, we can only go one.
Where there's gonna be more teenagers at checkpoints. I remember that in the neighborhood I grew up in. There was a time period for about thirty years. It was really heavy parking. All of a sudden, we all start graduating. And now a lot of the people are still living there, but don't have many teenagers anymore. Parking's not an issue.
Look, my household has a teenager who's about to get a license, gonna help me, uh, and it's a, you know, that's gonna be another crisis. Now, heaven forbid, now look, all of our neighbors have kids who are like five and six. When those kids turn sixteen. That place is gonna be flooded with cars.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's, it's, it's legal to park on the street.
I'm not saying it's not legal to park on the street. What I'm saying is the excess of. Owning so many things, not.
We can't tell.
I'm, it's a safety issue on our street.
But my point is that's a different issue. If you want your street to be no parking, that's fine. That's a totally different issue.
We should make people walk.
Right, to the dog park.
The problem is, is we are not a walkable town because there's not really good public transportation and no one works within the town.
That was true.
So I, I wanna be very clear that my, I care about aesthetics, but my number one concern is um. Vehicles that park across the whole front yard so tightly that if a fire was to happen.
The front yard, they're not supposed to be in front.
I'm saying safety wise. My thing is like. That's what's on my radar more than, I, I like the aesthetic part too, don't get me wrong, it's. That's what's black and white to me is like the one that came to us last, last month or whatever. The flags that flew up for me wasn't, okay, this looks horrible, it's. How, how is emergencies supposed to reach the front door?
And now all those, now all those cars are out.
And I'm not, yeah, and I'm not pinpointing him. There's one on my street that they have put pavers down and they literally have. Car, 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 car. Mirrors folded in so they can get their cars so tight. I don't know how they get out and they probably crawl through each one.
Everybody has to close their mirrors.
But I know that, and then they have more cars on the street. And that's right where it's so tight that part of me wants to be like, we should only have parking on one side because you can't get through, but then that takes parking away. But it's my concern that there isn't the look, it's the annoyance of a neighbor of how many cars do you need? It's the safety, like.
When I moved in on high street, there was signs that said no parking and then when they built the house next door to it, they pulled all the signs.
And you're cold as sad when I dropped off your packet when you started, I was going.
Every person that lives around, out of the seven houses, we're the only house that both of our cars are in the driveway. Other than, every house around me has eight vehicles at the time, plus two, eight vehicles. So when we pull through, that'll be the hardest part about teaching Michael to drive is to not hit the neighbors. We're, we're, we're live, so there's no convenience that year, but which area of town are you?
Near the, but something near to the new development. So yeah, I think we have to be concerned about cause and effect, but we do have to focus on. Each thing or we're just gonna.
I think you can sum it up too, if you have side, if side, just driveway or side yard, just no parking in front yard.
And I wanna clarify, you can parallel park in front of your own driveway.
Yes.
As long as you're not blocking.
You can't block anybody else. What I was getting on some of these pictures is. So here it's this house, he's got nine cars. He's got an extra wide driveway that's got six in it. He's got three more in the front yard. But it's all drivable.
You're getting back to what is a drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yard, in your front yard, in front of your house, if not a driveway.
I heard.
Eh, I understand aside, that that makes perfect sense, but not a front.
Okay, so there's a one picture where. The whole front yard is dirt from the road up to the property. The whole thing.
The one that Counselor Kit was responding.
And they park everywhere. So doesn't have, doesn't have an actual.
Oh, so unimproved.
Yeah, the, yeah.
The other, yeah.
Well, they also want us.
What's the driveway?
And that's another big issue with this town is we have two. Types of town.
Yeah, the north.
We've got this side of town that has no sidewalks, no defined driveway. And are things grandfathered in from when the house were built?
That's the improved driveway. So they're encroaching on the front yard and the side.
Can I try to get us back on track?
Yes.
Brandon, what do we need?
I need direction from y'all on what we need to, I, I mean.
We need to tighten up our definition of driveway here.
I, I think either need to tighten the, tighten the driveway, the definition. Which would take some work with the planning commission, cause then we would have to go through, there's obviously go through the zoning issue, um. Or if you want to look at expanding a lot coverage.
Here's the, I think, I wanna be very clear. I think that our definition of driveway makes many of these things improper already. But I do think it makes sense to tighten it up.
I think whatever our definition is, it needs to be very concise and not open for interpretation. I get that every lot's gonna be different. But whatever happens, we also need to somehow communicate, one, why we're doing this. We're not trying to become as tight of an HOA or, you know, it's.
We must be getting a lot of calls for how much time we put in.
We're getting more and more.
It's getting worse. So can we, it sounds like we need to get the planning. Yeah, is that right?
And it, but I don't probably be. A few mon, I, I mean, I can probably put something on for next week's agenda. Yeah, well, they got one coming next week where they're talking over mobile food carts um being allowed. Um, now that we get the planning, the planning situation figured out for the, for the time being, we're working on that stuff. So I can add to the, the agenda next week. Just by doing that.
So what, if, if we wanted to go towards the planning commission, what is our choices now of giving directive of? How strongly are we enforcing this right now?
It needs to be enforced. I mean, it's the, well, that's, that's part of it is. You're gonna have some people that won't do it. They will not move them. I cite them, they don't go to court. Our next step would be to abate and have them towed.
Yeah, but then the lien is so for something that they're not gonna pay for, they're just gonna finally save.
Yeah, but so where's the money coming from to have these towed? RVs are about three, miss, minimum is three thousand dollars an RV. And we, I think we have like. I say to nobody wants them. Yeah, last year I think it cost us four thousand.
But I think if we start, if we start doing that, it's gonna set up the example that.
We're serious. I agree. We're gonna do it.
I also just wanna throw out there that if we're going to say, hey, we're gonna start enforcing this and we mean business, I can't tell you guys what to do. But remember, people know where we live. And then.
What do you mean start? We have been enforcing.
No, I mean, the liens on, of the towing and. If they're not gonna.
We've towed or abandoned, so we haven't.
So they want you to tell them.
That's the law.
Yeah, they leave.
That's the law. The law needs to be.
As far as abandoned.
No.
But, period.
No.
People are being cited for parking in the wrong place and they refuse to show up to court and they refuse, like. The process, there's due process for a reason. The due process has been offered. If they ignore it, they get towed. I mean, that's, that's the way the law works. Am I, am I honest right now?
I have twenty thousand dollars a year for abatements. I can burn that up pretty quick if we start towing vehicles.
Start towing vehicles, people might get mess.
We have to start towing vehicles. Okay, if we need to figure it out, we'll figure it out, but the law has to be.
You're not choosing on your own just to go over budget. You're going off of our directive of saying, we understand that.
Hold on, hold on, be clear. Brandon.
Sorry, I, yeah, sorry, I said, I meant our directive to Brandon, like. And then his directive to you, um. Yeah, I just, I just though wanna finish saying that we need to be very aware that. We need to set the example.
That tow company that services us for.
We've talked about that with the RV guy. Um, I can get, I mean, if, if we think it's gonna get aggressive, that Robert thinks so, I can reach out to a few tow companies, get some bids. I can take care of, cause it'll be under my, my um allocation to spend and I can get a few.
Nobody around, the one tow company is right here, they will not tow it. They don't want them in their lot.
Well, the cars, so that's, okay, but we're saying we shouldn't force it. Brandon, you're, you're a smart guy. Robert's a smart guy. If Robert says, hey, it's gonna make sense to look at the contract, look at the contract, you know, that's, that's. I feel like us stepping in to not to be micromanaging, it's not our job, your jobs to administer, do your thing.
Because if we tow, then when we coop that cost back and eventually they'll have to pay the, the. The tow truck, because we gotta tack our fee onto it and then there'll obviously be some type of thing with the, with the judge, with the court, because. When the judge came by last time, when judge came by last month, I was like, so what do we need to do to start doing this? Like, we just need the word. Till we start charging people by the day, because compliance only can happen if you charge them by the day and not just a one-time flat fee, they're not gonna do anything. You know, so, I mean.
So be it. Especially if your budget's twenty thousand, you get somebody to contract you for ten to the year or however. I just, I wanna be very clear, since we're live and people, I try to choice this. We're only to enforce the law. Don't go beyond it. Don't stretch, enforce the laws, that's right. I, I don't think that's crazy. So.
And that means enforcing laws between what's getting reported to us and what's being seen by us? Like, are we doing? Or are we just enforcing all what's being reported?
We do a lot of discretion, like I mentioned, uh, I mean.
We're proactive and reactive.
Yeah, but most of the calls we're getting for like Robert to go out there are gonna be, hey, like parking the wrong way, RV, trailer, ju- broke down vehicle. There's been a lot more discretion on, eh, let's leave that until we've kind of had, had, ended this conversation.
The discretion thing, that's outside of council's privilege. Like, we, we can give you policy direction. We can't tell you which circumstance makes sense to give discretion. That's.
Here's the thing though, if the vehicle's parked the wrong way, no, there's gonna be any discretion.
There is none of those.
But you know, if you see, if you see a car parked in the front lawn and you go up to the guy and he says, hey, I'm so sorry, I just, it's hot out. I just took ten minutes to go grab some water. I was just unloading some stuff. You said that discretion's, but if it's been parked there for a week, like, that's a different story.
Yeah, like I think that. How we approach it is as important as how, what we're approaching. And that's not just, you know, ding dong ditch of, ah, I got you.
Well, and it's remembering when they come here and asking for exceptions or saying they're being picked on and stuff, we need to be backing up. The code, we're asking the code enforcer to enforce this. And so we need to be standing that ground here as well.
And that's, you know, when they come for public input or whatever, that's on me to make sure that we're holding to our rule that we're not discussing it tonight. We thank you for your information. What, do we wanna discuss it? But that's why we don't throw our staff under the bus, cause. Then we get partial information that we think the picture's painted to us and then we find out it's a whole different.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Instead of him driving to Colorado, we could get him a record.
What?
So.
Instead of him driving his, the Colorado pickup, we just get his own tow truck.
Yes.
There we go.
Are we uh ready to move on?
Yeah.
I, I will get with the planning commission to see how we can define driveway a little.
Okay. Um, that puts us to the end of that, which leads us to um Brandon's financial report. But let's take five minutes, anyone that needs to go to the bathroom, let Brandon get set up. So we are recessing for five minutes. Yeah, are you awake over there?
Oh, I think.
I.
Fund revenues, then we had budgeted for expenditures, uh, we had about thirty-three percent um left untouched at the end of the year. Um, on the water fund side, um, we had, uh, five percent, we don't sorry, my bad, uh, sorry, let me go back to that. I'm looking at the the wrong percentage. In the sewer fund, uh, we had budgeted that. So yeah, we had thirty-three percent less. Oh, the other one, I forgot to carry the minus. I'm sorry. I don't listen to me late night. Um, the water fund, uh, we were about five percent less where we needed to be on the um, revenue projection. On the water fund expenditures, uh, we had about four million dollars. We spent less than three million, so we had about a quarter of that left at the end of the year. On the streets, that's the um state revenue that we get shared, um, our our share of the gas tax. Um, we had about fourteen percent remaining at the end of the year. Um, on the expenditure side, we had only spent about thirty percent of the budget. Obviously, a lot of that's not gonna be actually be spent in a year because we can, we always have some cash carried forward um in capital outlay for big projects. Uh, sewer SDC, uh, we saw some, we saw about twenty-three percent growth in our projected SDC revenue. Um, last fiscal year, which is always good, uh, meaning more people are building than we projected. Um, on the expenditure side, I mean, we spent nothing. We spent about ninety-one thousand out of the million dollars in the account. So we only spent about nine percent there.
We know that those are gonna dwindle, right?
Yeah, well, that I mean, and most of that's, um, the sewer SCCs are being held over for um what we do for the plant. So yeah, we we rarely spend anything out of there unless it's something that we have to, that's gonna be for expansion of the 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 system. Water SDCs, uh, we had budgeted about one point one oh four. Um, we brought in about tw- almost twenty percent higher in revenue for what we projected. Um, similar with the water SDC, though the water SDC, we had a bigger expenditure just because we had a lot of the final procedures with the reservoir. And the SDC was um one of the funders. The water SDC was one of the funding mechanisms for that water reservoir. Park SDC, uh, we saw some growth, about nineteen percent from what we planned, um, what we budgeted for. The expenditures, we spent nothing last year, which is always good when you don't have to spend anything. Um, and then, as you can see, our capital improvement plan list there, um, everything is complete. I'm gonna go ahead and say the bridge street repairs are complete because they're just about done, as is the highway ninety-nine pedestrian crossing. Um, the only thing we really have left over is the water, the wastewater facilities update, which hopefully should be done fairly soon. And then one thing um that we didn't have to use was the city matching funds. The grant because um the uh we didn't get the um sidewalk to school grant. So, I mean, that's pretty much the gist. Um, these are pretty standard in my time here. I don't know if you have any questions, any concerns, any comments with the numbers? You know, I think we're gonna continue to be healthy.
Can I just make it clear? We did invite budget committee if they wanted to.
Yes, yes. So that they're either viewing um at home live or they're gonna be watching on YouTube.
Okay, any further questions or you guys ready to move on? Uh, department reports, Brandon, I'll go ahead and let you take over department reports. I know there's some changes, but if Brandon does not touch on something that you guys want him, like a question on a report, he doesn't go into detail, please speak up.
Um, got one, I got something a little bit more in depth than public works, um, but real quick. Um, so the fire department's got a new um form. I mean, at the fire department, um, um sheriff's office, you can see it's a little bit more smoother, it's a little bit more cleaner. Um, you can kind of tell. Um, it's kind of similar to what we're doing with um the code enforcement. Um, so it's a lot easier to navigate. So hopefully, I told um Captain Whitlow that I appreciate the visual upgrades to the reporting. It seems like most cities are doing that, so um I think they just kind of fell in line. So that's great. It looks really good. Um, a couple of things on the administrative side. Um, don't forget, we have our special work session for strategic planning on October sixteenth at six thirty. So we'll have our meeting the ninth. And then the next month, the next week, we'll have our meeting here while planning commissions at the community center. Um, we will, the planning commission, uh, next week, we'll start looking at mobile food units. I know we spoke about that about a year ago. That there seemed to be some uh some want for expanding for mobile food carts now that the planning commission has caught up on other things that we were working on. We're gonna start working on how we can make food carts um, uh, a full-time use here on Lafayette. So um you'll probably be seeing something come to you within the next three to four months. City Hall will be closed tomorrow at eleven thirty. Uh, we have a yearly all-staff training. So we'll be here just going over some uh sexual harassment.
It's open in the morning and then you close.
Yes, well, yeah, we'll be closing eleven thirty. Um, we'll be providing lunch for the team and we'll be having, um, they, we're gonna be going over the employee personnel changes. Um, that you all approved a few months ago, um, workplace harassment, um, and then some other stuff. So, um, bridge street work starts Monday. The 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 big, big, big work. Um, everybody's been notified. Um, you you saw some communications come out on Facebook, our app, the newspaper. We did door hangers today. Thank you to Greg and Hisbrew. Um, so Monday, they'll start doing that. And then I think the following Monday, you'll start seeing everything go down to about one lane or so, um, once they really start getting into the membrane and digging up the guts.
How long are we expecting that to?
We're we're thinking probably like the first second week of October.
Yeah, I think they projected about a week. I, it's not supposed to last very long.
The actual one lane.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, the one lane, it probably probably be Monday through Friday that week. Um, just FYI, when you get a chance, um, there was a phishing attempt from one uh one of our counselors. So we wanna make sure, if you haven't done your computer training, um, it was a, it was almost to a point where money was gonna be exchanged.
Make it very clear, Mayor Malcolmson will never ask you guys to give me Apple iPad or Apple cards, okay?
Yes, so there's some training that you all have as part of that, if you can complete that. Um, just as signs, I know, um, some of you should know signs of phishing or or cybersecurity scams. But just for those who may need some refreshers, we have some um training for you, um, that's available. And then, um, I have reached out to Dayton, so Dayton is kind of putting a pause on this water intertie um latch on to us. Um, they're they're looking at possibly going for a more forensic-like um financial strategy for the water rates to where they can kind of look at affording their future planning for water. So in the interim, I have asked um Dayton city manager and city attorney to draft up a memo memorandum of understanding to where we can memorialize that we will not be paying anything um in the ti- in the interim for our shared system costs. Um, while they figure out what they want to do with their water system. Um, like I mentioned last year, the goal is to take any additional money that we were gonna be paying to the shared services of the water treatment plant to put that into Mack water line if we need the water expansion, which we probably would. But then also keep that into our uh water account since we're not gonna be, since we're pretty much locked out of using the water treatment plant. Um, I think after that moment, um, after the council agrees to the MOU, which I don't I don't foresee you, the council not agreeing to that, I think we need to have a discussion on do we need to discuss getting out of the system long term? But I think that's gonna be a a much broader discussion. I think that's gonna take time and seeing what we have for resources and permits and whatnot, but I know it there's a concern, even if there is things done to the with with Dayton, we still won't have access to that water. I think we 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 haven't had much access to that water outside of, we're supposed to be at fifty percent. That's always been the goal. But since I've been here, I haven't seen anything more than twenty. And I mean, and we were paying for the twenty percent share of water, but we're still paying fifty percent for all the costs. So if there's a way that we can make up that water and save on the, like, we're paying, like, you know, we had a breakdown twice here from Dayton, city, you know, city manager, we're paying the water supervisor, so all these things that were in charge, part of running the plant, we're paying fifty fifty-four.
But we weren't getting fifty fifty-four.
Yes, we were getting twenty percent water. So we may need something to look at long term. Um, as we start talking, as the regional plan's going, but also what we can do with Mack water line to uh look at. But obviously, it's a much bigger conversation. It's not gonna be done right away or even six months to a year. But I think the most the most pressing need is gonna be the MOU to Dayton, so we're not make, we're not making payments for something that we don't have access to. But that'll have to be formalized by you all. Um, and then lastly, so um, hopefully you took a look at the public works report. I'm gonna defer this to Greg here in a moment. Um, but we had some um compliance issues last month. If you wanna kind of talk about that a little bit and how we can kind of move forward and what that looks like in the future.
Yeah, so it's not something that I was looking forward to to uh come to you all tonight. Um, unfortunately, it did happen. Uh, we had a couple, three to be exact, non-compliance uh, for the month of July. Uh, two of those were not operator error. First, the first one was uh the temperature. Uh, that can't be, we can't control the temperature of the water. It is what it is. Um, unfortunately.
If we, I, so I just gotta clarify, if we can't control the temperature of the water, how are we not in compliance?
Do they want us to?
Let's let's rephrase this. So we all know the the plant wasn't built to where it should have been. And when Chad came here, came here two years ago or a year and a half ago, you all seen the 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 UV lights where we had the, we had the um the coverage, we had some cooling mechanisms. We were trying to use that instead of actually installing a cooler. Installing a cooler is gonna.
Before we we didn't order that, like we.
Yeah, the way the plant was built. So our UV bank needs a cooler. The cooler is probably gonna be more than the the press that we, the um, the uh
Uh, screen, screen.
The screen press that we said, hey, do we wanna spend money now and risk non-compliance? Or do we wanna put three hundred, four thousand dollars into a coolant system for something that we're gonna have to tear up in a couple of years? Luckily, when we do the the temperature situations like the BOD, there's not a monetary fine behind it. It can ding us on our permit, but like for our permit renewal in four or five years, on how many times we didn't meet the temperature flow. But in terms of a monetary fine, that's not gonna happen. DEQ knows our systems are out of whack. Um, but it's still a violation and we at least wanted to make sure that we communicated that we were not in, we were not there. Um, this is one of those things, just like the 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 screen press, I mean, do we wanna spend a million dollars for a coolant and a screen when we're gonna have to cut this up in a few years? I mean, that's just one of those things we have to kind of mitigate right now.
Part of the temperature too refers to the flow of the South Yam Hill. Um, we are definitely a lot lower this summer in the Yam Hill than what we were this time last year.
Have we passed last year?
We passed last year. We compared we compared this year's temperatures with last year's river flows. And we would have actually been in compliance this year had the river been flowing better like it was last year. We it's an unfortunate situation. Um, again, we we can't control the flow of the river. It is what it is. Um, EPA sets the standards for the temperature of what our temperature has to be when we dump into the South Yam Hill. Yeah, if you look at, from my understanding, if you look at a lot of cities that discharge into a water body, uh, they have the same issue that we have. They fight that temperature year after year, summer after summer. Like Brandon mentioned, we can put chillers in, but it's gonna cost a ton of money.
But it's all environmental influence, right?
It is.
So it's what, two months out of the year that you face that being strong?
Yeah, yeah, it's only, it's only an issue that ever happened in the summertime. Because that's when we have the UV tents out and we have all the, all the cooling mechanisms. The rest of the year, it's not an issue. It's always gonna be June, July and August.
Outside of spending a lot of money, we've, we've tarp the EQ basin, which I think you've all seen. We've painted the outside of it white in hopes to help, I guess, cool that water uh, before it hits the South Yam Hill. Uh, last year, we did put up all those tents down there and as well try and cool that water. It's, it helps. It most certainly helps. You know, even a half a degree helps. Half a, half a degree can can either make you still be in compliance or out of compliance. Uh, there's really nothing left to do to try and help cool that water outside of putting chillers in.
So the temperature is on what's, what's, that's one of three? What was the next one?
So the the second one is is the BOD, uh, that's pretty much your loading coming into the plant. Again, we can't control, um, what the city sends us. It 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 is what it is. Uh, BOD is your, it's basically your breakdown of all of your waste, if you will. Uh, that heats up the oxygen in the water. The oxygen helps break down the waste. Uh, the more we bring in, the less oxygen we have to help break it down.
And we, not trying to be funny, but we tried to find the day of the month it's happened. And it happened to be the day we had the garage sales in town. We have more people in town.
I I don't wanna, I don't.
We don't wanna, that was just a random day. It's like, wow, everybody was in town, everybody was using the bathroom on a Saturday. It just seemed that was the one day we pinpointed where we failed.
I don't want to finger at the, at the citywide garage sale. Uh, it just happened to be that day.
Well, there was a farmer's market going on too.
So again, that's just.
And so is that a monetary fine?
It is not. Um, it's it could be down the road. DEQ most certainly has the authority to look at your fines from past years. And go, okay, you've been in non-compliance on BODs for the last three years. I think we need to maybe give you a little bit of a fine. There is no fine opposed right now. There will not be. Uh, but I will never tell you all, we will never ever get fined for something like this.
That wasn't an issue in the previous fine trial. It was more of the actual testing and the numbers behind the testing more than it was the BOD or the pressure issue.
And again, that's the BOD loading, again, that's, that's, that's not an operational error. Um, a plant can only treat what the plant can treat.
What's next?
The next one is uh a failed QA QC on the Ecoli that we run. Um, I take full responsibility for that. Uh, I should have had better safeguards in place for my team to remind them that we need to check expiration dates on any and all products we use, whether it's water or wastewater. Uh, we use some collier, which is what we mix with the water to read out our Ecolize. Uh, that collier was expired by a couple of weeks. Um, by DEQ standards, you have to reclaim that as a non-compliance. So, yes.
It wasn't the sample, it was the tools that we used to take.
It was the tools that we use to run the sample.
Yeah, you have a plan to make sure that nothing.
Yes, I do. Um, we now have a work order in place to remind us that we will, from now on, check all water and wastewater products that have an expiration date. I went as far as mentioning to the crew that when we get a new product in, I want a black chart to be used and I want that expiration date written on that product.
Like big, so it's.
The expiration dates, um, for lack of a better way to explain it, they are written in fine print. They are very hard to see, very hard to remember with all the uh products that we use. Uh, but yes, that one was, that one was human caused. Um, that one is more on me for not putting a better safeguard in place for my team.
But you got a plan moving forward?
We do have a plan moving forward.
And are we looking at a monetary fine on that one?
No, we are not. It's a QA QC, uh, which is still a non-compliance. The Ecolize passed. We still submitted the Ecolize sample to DEQ. The Ecolize sample was still good, if you will. It's just the quality assurance that fell on it because the product was expired. Manufacturer says you're gonna use that product for a year after it is expired, but DEQ does not care.
Do they supply that? The, the, the product?
No, we buy it.
We buy that.
They don't have a consistent product that they require everybody in the state to use at the same time?
No, we, well, yeah, the collier packet, packet, we buy the eighteen-hour one so that we can read Ecoli out in eighteen hours. They do make a twenty-four-hour one. Um, there's several different manufacturers out there that supply these, these colored packets, packages. Um, again, the expiration dates on those are so written so smile, uh, small, uh, they are easily overlooked.
But we do have some good news on the cost savings. We can, before we wrap up tonight, if you wanna share the cost savings on the, uh, from what Chad had mentioned.
Yeah, so All That Flows, um, along with uh Public Works, uh, discovered that our DEQ permit does not require us to run as many samples every week as that we have been running. Um, we do have, uh, an extra person uh that we've hired recently that has some, um, pretty good background in wastewater. Um, so.
Came from Maine, by the way.
With that coupled with All That Flows and our current employees, uh, we feel pretty confident that we can also save some money and run in some of these samples in-house rather than paying a lab to do that.
That's about twenty or thirty grand per fiscal year. So some bad news, but we finished that with some good news.
No, I appreciate you bringing this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, if we, if we mess up, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta own it, you know, so.
While we're on this, while we're on this subject, just to put a feeler out there for you all, uh, there will be another non-compliance next month coming due to our temperature.
That second month we were just referring to.
Thanks, Greg.
Sorry for the bad news, but hopefully the good news made it further a bit of it. But unless anybody had any questions on the long manager report.
Okay, and I didn't make acknowledgement that there's a community development report now. Okay, um, Council Paulson, anything to record?
Um, I'm gonna need your help with this because I found out Larry shot me an email, but it was to my old email that I no longer have access to. Um, and I heard from Katie today from the owner of the shed, but there's an event going on September fifteenth um, with the LDA. It sounds like they've invited some people.
Yes.
Business owners, owners and like.
Yeah, some meet and greet at six thirty next Monday.
And so unfortunate.
Community center, right?
I heard that you might be there.
Yeah, I'll be there.
So, um, depending on a dog situation, I may or may not be there. It's gonna depend.
Okay.
So, um.
If you can't go, I can go.
Okay, um, who's next? Council, good.
Uh, nothing, just want to say I appreciate the mayor's words, the start of the meeting. I appreciate that. And world run, I appreciate that.
That feedback. Uh, Council Carson?
Um, nothing, except there has been some flux um with membership of the McManville School Board. Um, so it's a little bit up in the air, but I only had a day or so since I found out. Nothing.
Wait, yeah, there was a resignation due to um a member moving out of district. Um, Council Bill Rose is not here. Council Kit Hill?
Uh, Elcat reached out um to invite me to the meetings about the Harvest Fest. Unfortunately, I already had some stuff going on uh last night, but I will attend the rest of it. Because Harvest Fest is October eleventh. So, um, their meetings will be uh every Wednesday until that happens, if anybody else wants to go. And I um also wanna add that I appreciate the words at the beginning of the, of the city council. Definitely on my mind. That's it.
Okay, um, Council Maggie. Okay, mayor's report. Um, we have made contact with Center Market and I know that it's a whole different thing and it's not a city-related thing, but people are probably asking you. They finally got a, threw a nine-month wait with PGE for a block grade. Um, and so they are, I I I've noticed even the lights are on more, like, I think they were waiting for that to go through before they um, yesterday, for those that aren't aware, uh, Mac, McManville Habitat for Humanity um, hosted a block blitz, which is they found homes in our neighborhoods that needed um, some yard upkeep, uh, low-income um, residents that physically can't. Um, I would like to thank our city admin and code enforcement. We work together to try to find those families or those homes that were having code compliance issues and reaching out and making sure they knew about the opportunity to put out an application. They, um, and thank you to George Fox University and a group from AARP. Uh, there was a lot going on of taking care of our residents and they plan to come back um, later in October for some of the other houses. Um, Brandon and I have tomorrow a quarterly meeting with both chairs for budget and.
Right, next Friday.
Next Friday. Yes, sorry, I I wanna meet, but it's been a week. Okay, so we have coming up a quarterly meeting um, with our chairs, uh, it was a request from them after the last time we met that they wanted to just touch base with both of us and make sure that they're up to date of anything that might impact budget and planning commission. Um, speaking of that, there is an opening on planning commission. I've spent a lot of time soliciting for applications. If you have come in, I feel it's now time to um meet with those people. One thing that is on my radar, and if you have any concern, let me know, is stacking um, the, all of the planning commission living in one neighborhood. And right now, that's the opening, the applications that come in are from the neighborhood that's already pretty heavy, so I'm I don't know how I will move forward, but if I don't bring forward a nomination, that's probably why. Um, I just wanna make sure that one side of the neighborhood's not, one pocket of neighborhoods or a town's not having control over major planning stuff. Um, holidays are coming up. Um, Brandon and I are starting to work on coordinating with that with, um, Elcat and streamlining some stuff, but still making fun. Brandon and I have been invited by the Oregon Mayors Association slash, I'm gonna mess it up, the Oregon Association of City Managers? Okay, close enough. It's like, oh, hey, it's CMA, OMA, um, to be part of a joint panel at an upcoming uh, workshop at the LOC conference, um, that they're doing a whose job is it? And like Newland style, and so we've been asked if we would compete as a team. Um, so it's kind of fun. Um, we are in the talks with the McManville School District and an outside um, group, um, as a follow-up from the Youth Safety Town Hall was the question of are there resources available that we're not tapping into to see about um bringing an open basketball night to Washer Elementary um for the youth. Um, so we have a meeting with all entities involved at the end of this month. I am hoping to come back next month and tell you guys some good news. Um, so, yeah, uh, Washer Elementary School, um, Deputy Mead shared with me that it's going really smooth, so I just wanna give you guys an update after, you know, last year when we made changes that they seem to be sticking, that, um, he has not given out any tickets. I did watch him three minutes into the school year, light someone up from his parking spot, just to say wink, wink. Harvest Fest, speaking of, it is longer in the day, it's nine to three. And Brandon and I would like, what?
It's ten to three.
Ten to three, okay, that's even better. Maybe seven, okay. Anyway, if you are able and willing, please reach out to Brandon or I if you can help cover the city booth for an hour so that he and I are not there the whole day. Um, so I'll just send out an email to you guys and see if anyone's available, um, because it's not a policy thing, it's just a sign up to cover the booth. Um, and lastly, I attended the Board of Commissioners meeting today, and I think we outdid you on time if we go for two more minutes. Um, they discussed dog control and new, new conversation, nothing finalized. Um, but some interesting facts about dog control because it does impact their citizens. I learned that only about ten percent of dogs are licensed. Um, that right now, it's, and licensing is a county code thing. Um, that the licensing um fee, they've been sending to the cities that have their own police departments, the, the licensing fee, seventy-five percent, that's getting kicked back to the cities. Um, and so they're discussing about bringing a little bit more back in-house with um some of the licensing so that, um, they might be pulling that back Lafayette because we already contracted the MLK and the sheriffs, because we haven't been getting that seventy-five, our share of the seventy-five percent. So that won't impact us. Um, but they are looking at what it will take to do a little bit of the code enforcement on it in-house instead of contracting out. And I got, yeah, yes, so I, I paid attention. Other than that, um, I just wanna thank you guys for, um, I watched the meeting that I missed last time and just wanted to extend a thank you to Council President Paulson for chairing that and.
You're welcome, and I move to adjourn.